Welcome to the Whitman Hansen Regional School Committee meeting of June 29th. It is 6:00 PM. This is a reorg meeting. I am who will decide over the reorganization of the meeting. This meeting has been held fully remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts, March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law, section 30A, section 20. If you would all please join me for the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
The Constitution.
Thank you. I ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. This meeting is being recorded and being tele-- are being recorded live and is on WHCA TV. I'm going to actually congratulate Mr. Steve Boyce in his reelection campaign and welcome Mr. David Forth on his successful election in the town of Whitman. Thank you, Ms. Ally Taylor, for her six years of service. Congratulations to Hillary Niffen on her successful election in the town of Hanson. And thank you to Mr. Robert O'Brien for his nine years of service. If we could do a roll call of folks in attendance, please. Please answer yes when I call your name. Steve Boyce?
Yes.
John Byers?
Yes.
Dan Cullody? David Forth?
Yes.
Bob Hayes?
Yes.
Chris Howard?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Hillary Niffen?
Yes.
Chris Scriven?
Yes.
Fred Small. Thank you. We will now move to the first item on the agenda, which is the reorg of the committee. I'm asking for nominations for Chair of the school committee.
Mr. Small would nominate Bob Hayes.
I'll second that, Dan Cullody. So Mr. Small nominates Mr. Hayes, seconded by Mr. Cullody. Any discussion?
Oh, any other nomination?
Any other nominations? Thanks, Michelle. Any other nominations? I'm scrolling through. Seeing none, any discussion? Now move to the vote for Chair. Mr. Hayes. Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Ms. Byers?
Yes.
Mr. Cullody?
Yes.
Mr. Forth?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Niffen?
Yes.
Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Mr. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
You're unanimous. Thank you. Let me turn the virtual gavel over to the school committee chair, Mr. Bob Hayes.
Thank you, everyone, for your continued support. And I want to thank Mr. O'Brien also, Ms. Taylor also, for their services to the Whitman Hansen Regional School District of students. They put in quite a few years and it's wonderful that they were here to serve. And I want to welcome aboard Hillary Niffen. And thank her. And I want to welcome aboard Dave Forth-- excuse me. Don. Dave Forth Jr. And thank you both in advance for coming forward and wanting to be elected to a school committee. It's not an easy task. These people would have been here for many years now. But it is rewarding and you are here for the students. So I thank them all for coming aboard. I think my allergies is getting the better of me this evening. We're going to, I would entertain a nomination for Vice Chair.
I nominate Mr. Scriven.
Second, Mr. Howard.
Who seconded that? I'm sorry.
Mr. Howard.
Mr. Howard? Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair?
Guess not.
Seeing none? Move to the vote, Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Ms. Byers?
Yes.
Mr. Cullody?
Yes.
Mr. Forth?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Niffen?
Yes.
Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Mr. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes? Yes. I entertain nominations for Secretary slash Clerk?
I nominate Fred Small. Dan?
Seconded?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Scriven? Are there any other nominations for Secretary slash Clerk? Again, I apologize. It's-- I thought you shouldn't have done this in my office. Maybe that's it. I'm all over time.
Good big cheer?
Yes?
Could the people who nominated the secretary, please repeat their-- just say their names because I didn't get that. Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Dan Cullody?
Chris Scriven, second.
Thank you.
Move to the vote. Seeing as there are no other nominations, Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Ms. Byers?
Yes.
Mr. Cullody?
Yes.
Dave Forth?
Yes.
Chris Howard?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Hillary Niffen?
Yes.
Chris Scriven?
Yes.
Fred Small?
Yes.
Bobby Hayes? Yes. I entertain nominations for Treasurer.
Mr. Small would nominate Mr. Cullody.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Who was the second?
Mike Jones.
Mr. Jones, second. That was for Michelle's father record. I'm sorry. If you're going to second, please say your name. Same way with the roll call when we do votes. If I don't say your name, please do. Are there any other nominations for Treasurer? Seeing none? Mr. Boyce, we're moving to the vote.
Yes.
Ms. Byers?
Yes.
Mr. Cullody?
Yes.
Mr. Forth?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Sniffen?
Yes.
Chris-- Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Mr. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes? Yes. I entertain nominations for Assistant Treasurer.
Nominate Mr. Jones.
Second by Mr. Howard.
Is that Mr. Small?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Howard seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Are there any other nominations for Assistant Treasurer? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Ms. Byers?
Yes.
Mr. Cullody?
Yes.
Mr. Forth?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Niffen?
Yes.
Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Mr. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes? Yes. Okay. Congratulations to all the officers. We have to nominate some subcommittee. Now, do this this evening. And if we don't get the proper amount, it'll give you a week or so to determine until the next meeting to determine if you want to be on these committees. The first one is the Facilities and Capital Projects Subcommittee. We can have up to five members. Is that correct, Michelle?
Yes, so long as there's no quorum of the full committee.
Right. As long as we stay five or less. It doesn't have to be five, but it should be five or less. Facilities and Capital Projects Subcommittee. Is there anyone who would like to volunteer?
Mr. Small's been doing that for many years and I would like to continue.
Okay, we have Small.
Mr. Jones?
Jones.
Mr. Scriven?
John Byers?
Mr. Cullody?
Scriven. Byers. Cullody. Anyone else? We good? I think we have five. Small, Jones, Scriven, Byers, Cullody. You know I'm going back and forth. Okay, if I miss anyone, don't be afraid to speak up. For those new people, David and Hillary, we're doing this and if you put your hand up and you see me go like that, I'm kind of recognizing you. But if I don't, not be afraid to speak up. Speak up. Insurance Subcommittee, three members.
Mr. Small would be interested in that. Seeing I have an insurance license.
Okay. Who else?
I'll work with Mr. Small on that.
Mr. Boyce? I can take two more.
Mr. Howard, will you join us, please?
What is the scope of that? I just have to--
Well, I believe it's going to address all of our insurance needs and also to try and get a good collective overview on everything that we're doing, including health insurance. And I think that you would have some expertise in that area.
Yeah, so put me on. I just have to-- I may have to abstain if we get into any type post-retirement benefit. But other than that, I can--
It would be post-retirement. There would be post-retirement benefits included as part of that.
So I might just be able to not participate in that. So Fred, like the health insurance and all that stuff, I'm good.
Okay.
Be on.
Thanks, Chris.
Yep.
Anyone else? We can run with three on that for one minute. This takes up for any-- and I'm sorry, I probably should be explaining to the new members as we go forward. Facilities and Capital--
Where did he get?
That was me.
Didn't have a sneeze?
It was actually one of the select people. Insurance Subcommittee is exactly what Mr. Small talked about. It's going to be reviewing all the insurances from insurance on buildings to liabilities to contract insurance. Policy Subcommittee takes up any changes in policies that we may be doing during the year affecting handbooks or any of the policies that the school does. The Subcommittee comes to us with a recommendation and all of these things are voted by-- by full school committee.
I did, yeah.
Okay. Don?
Yes, please.
Anyone else? There's room for two more.
Mr. Cullody?
We good?
Mr. Cullody?
You got Dan? You got Mr. Cullody?
I've got Mr. Forth, Ms. Byers, Mr. Scriven, Mr. Cullody.
Thank you.
If you have room for one more, I'll hop in. I've been on it for years.
No, there's only four, Fred. I don't want to be overworking you, you know. There's more to go.
Yeah, how many times did we meet last year? Once, I think? It wasn't much. Most of it's done by M.A.E.S.C. anyways.
Yeah. Okay, next committee up is a warrant Subcommittee. Now, just to give you a little bit of history on that quickly, the warrant Subcommittee signs all the warrants so the stuff can go out and get paid, whether it be building expense, payrolls, anything that the district pays. We have, since we've gone virtual, the committee voted that I would sign all of the warrants because everybody can't get into the building. But the warrant Subcommittee is to go up and sign warrants and we have to have three signatures. Is that correct, Michelle?
Yes.
Well, you have a choice now by law. You can have one person or three.
Right. So I will get on the warrant Subcommittee if no one has any objections. If you do, let me know because I have probably the most flexibility. Who else would like to be on it?
I'll do it, Dan Cullody.
There's room for three more. And it doesn't mean we have to have all of us. Mr. Jones? Is that you?
Yes, I'll do it.
You can put me on the bottom of the list that if people can't make it in, I can usually finagle something to get in there.
Anyone else before we get to Mr. Small? Anyone else? I don't want to miss anybody. Okay. Pilgrim Area Collaborative Representative. I already have reserved that for Mr. Boyce unless there is objection and someone else. I need an alternate, though.
Mr. Cat?
I'll do the alternate, Bob. Chair Hayes.
Okay.
Thanks, Don.
Is that good, Steve?
That's very good. Thank you very much, Don.
You're welcome.
I am assuming I didn't hear you object, Mr. Boyce, so you must--
In it.
Okay. Legislative-- You're welcome. Legislative Representative, Mr. Small was doing that. That involves dealing with the politicians right now currently. It would be Mr. Cutler, Mr. Brady, and Allison Dun-- yeah, Allison. Allison Solomon. I always say Donovan because they had an Allison Donovan on a basketball team at Hanson. Okay.
How are you doing it?
Like, was Jones doing that as well? Was Jones on that last time? Sorry, Mike.
Yeah.
Mike, would you want to be on it too?
You're muted.
You're muted, Mike.
One more time.
Mike, you're muted and then muted again.
Yes, I'll be on it.
Mr. Small, Mr. Jones, I have room for one more. If everybody's okay. Mr. Forth. Okay. Mass-- excuse me. Mass Association of School Committees and Mass Joint Conference Delegate in an alternate. This involves going to some of their meetings and some of them are-- some are in Sturgis and some are in Hyannis. And school committee members can go. They run lots of valuable workshops, but this is somebody to vote. They need a voting delegate. And I thought, Mr. Jones, do you have your hand up? I think Ms. Byers was last year. Is that right, Don?
I was the alternate to Chris Howard last year, but I don't-- I'll volunteer to speak.
All yours. And I'm happy to be the alternate unless someone else will, in which case it's all theirs.
So, Don, would you like to be the delegate?
I will volunteer to be the delegate, yes.
Thank you. And this is the person who goes to the conference?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, no, this is-- no, Dan, this is the person that votes at the conference, right? We don't--
At the annual meeting.
Go up to the conference and make the vote for the committee.
It's that Saturday morning, if I recall correctly.
That's right.
If they have.
Now, to the new-- two new members, there's a course called Charting the Course. Within your first year of being on the committee, you have to go to Charting the Course. We will definitely inform you when and where. Sometimes it's close to us. Sometimes it's the western part of the state.
Always at the conference?
Yes. And some-- and at the conference. One time, Mr. Hardy, Jim Hardy, who's one of the representatives ran, and we had one at Whitman Hansen. We could even offer that again when we get off of going virtual. But we'll be contacting you through Michelle Kelly.
Lindbergh.
Lindbergh. We had time on names.
Wayback machine.
Michelle was on that basketball team too, huh?
Yeah, exactly. So we'll be contacting you through Michelle or Michelle will be contacting you to let you know that where the conference is. And if Jim wants to hold it at Whitman Hansen, I don't think we have any problem doing that either. He had one fairly recently at Whitman Hansen, so he may even consider that. He lives fairly locally. I think he lived in Ebit. So, Michelle, are there any other subcommittees?
No, but is Chris Howard going to be the alternate?
Yes.
It's Mr. Howard's going to be the alternate, right?
Yes, unless someone else wants to, in which case that's perfectly fine.
You good? Okay. And also in your packet, you will say you have-- in your virtual packet, you have a school committee directory with how you can-- with everyone's names and email addresses on it. That's something you may want to keep, especially to the new members in case you have any questions. If any of you have any questions with me, do not hesitate to call.
I need a new packet, Michelle.
No, excuse me, Chair. That was just for your reference until that all of the reorganization work was done. And I'll put the chair and stuff, so they didn't get that.
You will receive one. I received one for tonight, I guess.
In order to do the elections.
Okay. So all the committees have been done. If we have any new committees, we'll be doing it on the fly during the year. And so that's how we're going to do it as we move on if there are any other committees. We will be establishing a feasibility study committee for the Whitman Middle School Building Committee. But we're going to get to that later on in tonight's minutes. So, I mean, in tonight's meeting. So I entertain a motion to accept the minutes of June 17th, 2020.
Mr. Small make that motion.
Seconded by Dan.
Discussion.
Bob, I got something for you after we vote this.
Nothing to do with the minutes, though, right?
No, it's on the previous Subcommittee stuff, so I want to get through this first.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Forth?
Is it all right for me to abstain because I wasn't there for that meeting?
That's what you should do.
Okay, cool.
And same thing with you. Basically, though, because you weren't there doesn't mean you have to abstain because you're only voting the document as presented. Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Ms. Byers?
Yes.
Mr. Cullody?
Yes.
Mr. Forth?
Abstained.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Niffen?
Abstained.
Mr. Scriven? Mr. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes? Yes. Okay. Mr. Howard, you had something you wanted to talk about before we move on?
Yeah, just more of a question. I know we have the Regional Agreement Committee that's still kind of out there and at some point is going to have to reconvene and do some work. Are we considering that already stated or do we need to look at voting the constitution of whose--
The committee--
Correct.
Regional Agreement. We still have that committee in effect. And I think we need to take that up at the next meeting. I'll put it on the agenda. It wasn't on for tonight's agenda to see if there's going to be any changes in how that meeting-- how that will go. All right? Everybody okay? Okay. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. So I just, under Town Election Results, I'd like to welcome our new members, Mr. Forth, Ms. Niffen. Great to see new faces on the committee. On this-- this is a great team to be on. Welcome back, Mr. Boyce. I'm looking forward to seeing you live and in person someday in the future. I just want to address before we move on some social media stuff in both communities as far as coming at me personally and even some pictures being put up of me. It's all well and good. It's First Amendment right and all that. And I'm not going to tell people not to express themselves. But I really wanted to thank the members of both communities who emailed me and Facebook messaged me, a show of support in the values and ethics that I put forward and the commitment that I have for the kids of both of these communities. It was really touching for me. On Saturday night, I was receiving some pretty vile things from some colleagues that were posted. Again, it's personal. I'm not going to say it didn't affect me that night, but I'm here to do a job for the kids of this community and I will continue to do that as long as this committee wants me to be in this seat. So I just wanted to send a public thank you to all those folks in both towns that reached out on Saturday night, Sunday, and even this morning saying that they support me and my efforts. So we'll continue on. This is about our students and putting forth the best opportunity for our kids pre-K to 22. Every kid in this district deserves a proper education. And I will continue to do the best I can through this as we maneuver our ways to get a budget approved and into next school year, whatever that looks like. And I'll get to that in a little bit. Any questions or anything before I move on? Okay. And I again thank the committee for their support through the last couple of months. It's been pretty trying, trying to get some things-- get some things moved in our communities. And we'll continue to fight the fight. In your packet, you'll see a template for an evaluation for me. Sometimes these evaluations are done in June, but because we've gone virtual, it's been challenging to try to put this together. You will see my goals that I set back in September. I'd ask you over the next month or so, and Mr. Hayes will gather as much information from you for this evaluation. And we can do the evaluation formally at another date. Last year, we did it on the first day of school. So if we set a date in the summer to do the evaluation, if we set a date before school starts, that's okay with me. I will update the committee with where we are with my goals. And if you just look at those goals, we were in a good spot come February and March 13th. We kind of maneuvered away from that, but we still were working or still working on a strategic plan for the district. In fact, that's something we can present at the next school committee. I'd like your input on that. We've been working since September on the regional agreement and the budget. Hopefully, I will have some good news for you when we talk about the ELA curriculum later on in the meeting. I think we're in a good spot with that. And as you all know, we did successfully get a building project for the new middle school. And we actually had an invite this morning of our officially, our induction into eligibility, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. So if you have questions about my goals or performance that you want to dialogue with me by phone or in person, as best we can do, or by Zoom, let me know. And I would ask Mr. Hayes that you also send this out to Mr. O'Brien and Ms. Taylor because I'd be curious about their feedback over the last year as I-- for the formal piece of the evaluation. Any questions?
Just to remind everybody while we're talking about the superintendent's goals, this evaluation report is put together by the Mass-- by DESI, Department of Education and Secondary Education. They changed it from a much lengthier goal process to a much simplified goal process because the previous goal processes were 25 and 30 questions long. And unless you worked in the school district as a school committee member, you would have a tremendous time trying to evaluate a superintendent. To the two new members, if you have any questions, as you can see, there are only four ways of doing it. Unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, and exemplary. And it's on the standards of Standard One Instructional Leadership, Standard Two Management and Operations, Standard Three Family and Community Engagement, and Standard Four Professional Culture. At the end of the report, you will see you can add a comment. If you look at your rubrics at a glance, it tells you simply what one, two, three, and four are. It's what you have to evaluate off of. If anyone has any questions, notify the superintendent or notify myself, and we'll see if we can work our way through it, or as members, you, you all use evaluation. But they did simplify this, and it seems to be a much easier step. I know for the new members coming in, it might not be so easy, and as Jeff said, I will give Ally Taylor and Robbie O'Brien copies of this because they were on the committee for the last year, and we will take those into consideration when we put that back in as our evaluation report. I think I'd like to have this back right after we get back to school, but if, if we don't do it until the October meeting, I'm okay with it unless somebody has large objections. It'll give you a little bit more time to see what's going on, how we're gonna move through this one twelfth budget process and going on in the district. So if no one has any time problem with time constraints, as long as I get it back in September for an October meeting, I'll be happy about that. Michelle, there is no drop date, if I'm correct. They haven't changed anything, have they?
I would ask the superintendent that.
No, you, I mean, I, I, I'm not sure what DESI's requiring. Teachers, we have to submit evals to teachers, for teachers and staff by July seventeenth, but we didn't submit mine until the end of the year last year, or until school started. So I'm not sure. I think you're, as the school committee, you can make your own dates as long as I'm evaluated. DESI needs to make sure that I'm evaluated by the school committee.
Everybody okay with the end? Go ahead, Chris.
So either a question for you or for Jeff. What is the, what is the actual period of evaluation? Is it the fiscal year? What, when, what is the start and what is the end date?
I, I think we, we really go school year. I mean, I, 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 I'm, it's, it's open for you folks. Last year, really, you evaluated me in, in, in August formally presented, so August to August would make sense now.
Got it.
I started in July, but you know, as we go, fiscal year would be challenging. It, it could be done, but it's up to you folks. It sounds like it's August to August.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Sorry. So for teachers, we do, we have a rubric like this as well, and we have to provide a lot of data to support our goals. So I don't know if it's the same for superintendents. Is it looking back at school committee meeting, uh, meeting minutes and things like that? Is there a formal submission of data to show, you know, that you've met goals? I just, I'm familiar with it on a teacher's side, but not necessarily on the superintendent's side?
As we go through the years, I try to present pieces of evidence at school committee meetings. But if committee members want additional evidence pertaining to a goal or a standard, I'd be very happy to, to provide that for, for any member.
During the year, Hillary, like, will say maybe before the December break, superintendent will bring to the committee where he feels he is in his goals, and we will review the four pillars of, of the goals to figure out if he's getting closer to them or further away. We, we do some of the evaluations during the year, so.
Okay.
But it is, it is for like members from the nineteen-twenty school year, because we're going to twenty-twenty.
Yep.
If that helps you at all. The superintendent comes to us during the year, and, and we talk about his goals and where we think he is. It's, it's gonna be difficult for you two, where you just got on to, to look at it and see where he is. It's kind of, as new members come on, it does make it a little bit more difficult. We, we have to do it. So that's why I reached back to the members that were on for an evaluation, even though they're not, they're evaluating the last year of their performance and their association with superintendent, if that helps you. Okay, keep going, Jeff.
No other questions? Alright, summer program. So we're slowly trying to open for some of our summer programs, as I mentioned before, and, and the school committee approved. We won't be doing building use projects over the summer pertinent to the high school because of lack of, of control over the, over those programs. We'll be opening up the YMCA program at Duval for our parents. The Y worked with us on a, on a real developed opening program that's safe, that's been approved by Whitman DPH so far. We're working with both DPHs, but Whitman has already approved the Y program. We will also have the North River Collaborative Program. They've been our guests and renting it out for their extended school year program. They will be moving into their space sometime next week, again, with their, with their opening protocols. At the high school, we will be offering those camps and clinics. So Science Camp will be opening up under the provisions of, of the Department of Public Health and their recommendations under the guise of Lisa Tobin, our lead nurse. We will also be looking at a 3D camp for, for, for students that we ran last year at the high school sometime in August. And we will be doing those clinics, those sports clinics, when we get into phase three, per the governor. The, the real issue is, we've really tried to work with our own communities that we know they can, we can trace who's been there. There are forms that people have to sign in daily that we've worked on, and George is handing me a few things, that, that you have to sign. We're really tracing folks. If you come in and you leave, you're signing in the next day, and parents are signing off that their kids are healthy. And we're following all the guidelines that are required by our local DPHs and the state DPH and, and the governor's plan for reopening right now. So it's really local. It's, it's our, our students, our camps, and our clinics to benefit both the, the populations of Whitman and Hanson, primarily the younger grades, and then the, especially for the athletic piece, and then the Science Camp and the 3D Camp, were for, for middle school and high school ki, or excuse me, elementary and middle school kids. And again, the YMCA program that they've been running since March as, as a childcare center, they will move over to their summer enrichment program at Duval, utilizing the cafeteria primarily, mostly outside as best as possible, but the cafeteria and one air-conditioned room. We have a plan in place to clean every day, and again, the tracing piece for us, we will know where every member is, signing in and signing out at all of our, our facilities, really just Duval and the high school, when we do these, these summer programs.
Anyone have any questions?
I'm scrolling through too, Bob. Okay, thank you. So last week, DESI sent out to all, and there was a major conference call. The governor released their, the reopening plans. I want to say that I received the reopening plans. I think the, the conference call was for Thursday. We received the plan at eleven o'clock on Wednesday night. So there was a, the Globe got the reopening plans prior to the governor's press conference. We had a quick conference call with the commissioner on, on Thursday, then we listened to the governor's reopening plan. So realistically, there's still a lot of unknowns of where we are in our reopening, and that provides a huge challenge for us right now. One, financially, we, as of Wednesday, we will be in a one-twelfth budget, planning for next year. We don't know if we're gonna have a fiscal twenty-twenty-one budget, as, as the towns are still disagreeing, and there, and there's still some conversations about the fiscal twenty-one budget, and we're being asked to come up with multiple plans for reopening. One being a, a remote school where we're fully remote, one being a hybrid of in and out of school, and one being a, a full, you know, full day with restrictions. We've also added two caveats to that, and we've, we'll send this out to you guys, but we've colored, colored, color-coded it. One is also homeschool. I think for folks that are on the call or hearing this now, parents aren't really sure the difference between remote school and homeschool. If parents choose to homeschool their children, they have to ask or send a letter to the Assistant Superintendent with the curriculum that they plan on using for homeschool. That student will not receive any school services in the regional school district, and it has to be approved. That's not remote school. Remote school is what we've done since March. We went totally remote. That's distance learning. That's a plan we will also come up in place, and that might be different, or it is very different than the homeschool curriculum that parents can choose to purchase or, or get online for their children. Remote school will be teacher-driven, and kids are going to be at home. We are working with the, the association on a memorandum of understanding to, to discuss what that will actually mean for our teachers. So that remote school will be a, a distance learning platform of what we are looking, what we will provide for our kids. So that's, that's one piece. The hybrid piece is where students might come to school, and this is just a for instance, one week on, one week off, or two days in the week, and then three days remote. Those are plans that we're putting into place now as a hybrid. What that means for us right now is, is, and I will just say it aloud, it's kind of nightmarish because we don't know how many of our teachers are gonna feel comfortable coming back to school to teach during COVID-nineteen. We don't know how many students are going to be sent to school from their, by their parents during the, this pandemic. We've asked parents and teachers to fill out a survey to kind of give us an understanding of how many people will be returning to school, so we can have a plan in place. All these plans have to be submitted to DESI by the middle of July. So George and I and my team are working on these plans. The other third, which I'm calling light green, is full, full-go-of-school with restrictions. As many people have dialogue on social media and in the media, the full restrictions are a change of the six-foot rule or six-foot requirement recommendation to a three-foot recommendation. Six-foot is ideal. Three-foot is the minimum that students can be a part. There will be a requirement of mask-wearing from grades two through grades twelve, and all teachers are gonna be required to wear a mask. Not sure how that's going to play out in policy or handbooks when certain students aren't necessarily comfortable or say they aren't going to wear a mask. We haven't crossed that bridge yet. We're still trying to put these plans in place. We don't know what transportation's gonna look like in any of these scenarios. If we're going to full with restrictions, we don't know how many students we can actually play on a bus. The commissioner informed us, this is TBD, TBD, and more details to follow. He's hoping by the end of July, or by the end of June, middle of July. End of June is this week. I'm guessing more towards the middle of July. The full green is full restrictions or, or full-go-of-school without any restrictions. I assume that's when there's a vaccine, and we're phase four all the way across the board. The challenge that we are, are dealing with right now, and, and, and I will again say, kind of nightmarish. We don't know how many of our staff will, are going to be returning. We are anticipating hearing that information relatively soon. And if we don't have a fiscal twenty-twenty-one budget and we're in an FY-twenty budget, the probability of laying off, you know, twenty-six to forty teachers depending on, 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 on unemployment really challenges us. George and I have walked through different classrooms already and measured them out with our tape measure, me sitting at a desk and working out six feet and three feet. And it looks like we can fit twenty to twenty-five students in a high school classroom, depending on the, the labs versus a classroom. We haven't got to the elementary schools. The challenge that I presented to the committee is if we're in an FY-twenty budget and we are, have, we will lay off teachers, I can't put thirty kids in a class, and I can put twenty. So where do those other students go? That poses a major issue for us. Is that gonna dictate the fact that we, we'll have to go hybrid because we won't be able to put the full class in, in a teacher's room? We will be utilizing as many people as the commissioner made a recommendation to utilize as much space as we can. That might be gymnasiums, that might be cafeterias. The recommendation is students are, are a requirement, is students will be eating in their classroom. But I am very concerned, and George has passed me a note, we might not have enough staff. We have, we have three issues. We have a money problem. We have a staffing problem, and we have a space problem. And those are three problems that, that I, I don't have an answer for yet. We will be working on and we will share with this committee the plans we put in place to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Again, we were told that they're gonna need that soon, sooner than later, mid-July. And the other challenge is I'm gonna be presenting a plan for the commissioner without a budget. He will know, and, and we will hear tomorrow what our budget, what our, our, our monthly one-twelfth will be. But I'm not assuming it's gonna be the fiscal twenty-twenty-one number that we're presenting to our two communities. So that's the challenge that we have about reopening. Again, I will reiterate to, to parents who are listening and, and, and what's in the express, please provide feedback on remote learning. Please provide as much feedback about your, your ability and your willingness to send your child to school. That will come into play as we do numbers and counts, and we will be working with the association as well about teachers who might not come to school because of a medical condition for themselves, or a loved one, or the fact that they're caretaking a, a member of their family. Those are all things we have to take into consideration, and by law, there, people will have rights to a free and appropriate education and a, and a safe workplace. So we are working with those things as well. So as we roll out this plan, it, it's been, it's been, it's encompassing. It's been, it's been met with a lot of dialogue from, from families across the state. Some family members don't want to send their kids to school. Some family members want to send their kids full, full-go. Athletics is still on the bubble. The commissioner is working with the MIAA and the, and the, about a, a plan for high school athletics in the fall. The commissioner has said more than once, golf is different than wrestling, so they are working on a plan. We will also be looking at our special education population and the students in most need due to some regression that has taken place through remote learning. One of the caveats that the commissioner mentioned to us is he would like to see all special needs students who are, are really in sub-separate classrooms, who are most needy, not doing a hybrid, but doing a full-go-of-school with those restrictions in place, so that they are seeing their teachers on a daily basis. We are also working on a plan for that. So we've got a lot of balls in the air right now, a lot of things to juggle. And I'll keep the committee and the, and the community as, as informed as we can. We do have another co, uh, conference call with the commissioner tomorrow at ten-thirty to provide us as much information that he has on our, on the reopening plan. I will be talking about school calendar again later on in this meeting. The commissioner has and did say, and there was a meeting with the Board of Education for the Commonwealth with DESI today to talk about time on learning potential and reduction of school year. Basically, basically, and I'll share with, with you, he's looking to add three, three, three less days in the school calendar to provide teachers three additional days at the beginning of the year to work through all the plans that we have to put in place, prepare their classrooms, and do, do professional development really with us, with guidelines from, from DESI on, on the trainings of the PPE materials and how we will move forward with the remote plan or the hybrid plan if we have to put those into place anytime during the school year. The commissioner was very upfront, saying these all could be very fluid. In fact, one town might be full-go with no restrict, with restrictions, and one town might be a hybrid, and one town might be totally remote, depending on where the virus is and the spikes based upon the, the most up-to-date health information from the local boards of health. So we have a lot of things to juggle in a short amount of time, and that's why there's tremendous anxiety here about the fiscal issues that the district is facing. The remote plan comes with some, some money from the department or from the governor. We just haven't seen how we apply for those, those, those funds yet. The, the governor did say, and it looked like to be about a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar per pupil, not reimbursement, but expenditure, expenditure to this, to each district to cover PPE costs. I will say that Mr. Cutler is working on, on an amendment or, or something to the mass legislature to provide the regional school district close to two-hundred, between two-hundred and three-hundred thousand dollars for technology to make sure that we can work with remote learning in our district. So Mr. Cutler is working on that. He thinks he has some good momentum on that, so I'll give him a shout-out here. Once that's officially approved, we will work together to provide technology, whether hardware or infrastructure, to make sure our students can do a fully remote or hybrid plan in the district. So thank you to, to Mr. Cutler. A lot of these things are still in process in place, and as soon as we have the method to apply for reimbursements, which we're doing with both communities now through Mr. Standbrook and Mr. Lytton, and, and George is working through the Esser part of the DESI grant to make sure that we have our, those, we're expending as many, using the funds that are available to us. There will be no stone unturned when it comes to funding that's given to us through the federal government, through the state, and through our, our own Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So details to follow as those, those come through. I still don't know what the actual cost will be for PPE once the regulations are, are really approved and, and rolled out. And again, this could be fluid and, and a continual, it's kind of like a river flowing down. It can stop and it can go really quick. So that's the most up-to-date piece on, on the reopening of the district. There, the commissioner has not said to us that we have to start after Labor Day or anything. It's still a local decision. He has not reduced nine-ninety for the high school, but he did talk about a one-seventy-seven school year to provide PD for, for all teachers across the Commonwealth.
Anyone have any questions on the superintendent, because I have. Go ahead, Brad.
And I don't know if we want to wait a couple notches down to get into it, but chapter seventy funding being cut.
Yeah, so, so I, I've heard from, I've, I've heard nothing specific except for it can be, you know, something from five percent to twenty percent in chapter seventy. We've also heard that chapter seventy funds won't be cut, but reimbursement, transportation, and circuit breaker reimbursement can be hit pretty hard. So those are, those are numbers that aren't out there. What I did hear, and I asked Mr. Cutler specifically when we were on the phone about the governor's budget, and they level funded for the state for July, and he's anticipating a level-funded budget for the state in August. So I'm not sure if we're gonna know numbers even in August yet. There is pressure on, on the, the legislature to get those numbers out as soon as they can, so districts, not only ours, but every district that receives chapter seventy money has an understanding of, of what they're getting. But any cut in chapter seventy, as we all know, we received two, twenty-four-point-six million dollars in chapter seventy-eight. Any cut to that is gonna be, be hurtful to the district if it's twenty percent. I think Mr. Small said at once, it would be extremely devastating, and I don't know how we were gonna open the building, even if we're allowed to open the building, with another four-million-dollar hit to chapter seventy. And I don't know how we were going to open the building, even if we're allowed to open the building with another four million dollar hit to chapter seventy.
Let's try to save any more budget discussion for when we get to the budget, please. Mr. Boyce and then then Dawn.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeff. A number of us got to meet at least in Whitman on Saturday, a candidate for Plymouth County Treasurer. And I was asking about that ninety million dollars. It has to be applied for by towns. And I was trying to get an idea if it had, if what about regional school districts? I I'm not recalling what we might have talked about before. And I'd even ask Frank if, because I know he's on.
So Mr. Boyce, John, John Tuffy and myself are working with Mr. Lytton and Mr. Standbrook. We're giving them our our reimbursement costs and then they will apply through their own, through the municipalities. The regional school district cannot apply by by itself. That's an anomaly. Usually we can apply for things as a regional district. That this, the the ninety million in Plymouth County is accessible to municipalities. So we are working with with John Standbrook and Frank Lytton to make sure that they have our numbers of what what our costs were.
Thank you very much. I I I know it was something and and it's also refreshing to hear, especially for our new members and so forth. So thank you.
Thank you. On Saturday, Jeff, I did see Senator Brady near Town Hall in Whitman. And I just wanted to mention that technology amendment that Josh Cutler submitted. A friend of mine actually saw it on the legislative page. So she said, Whitman Hansen, you got an amendment filed by Josh Cutler and Representative Sullivan cosponsored it. And Senator Brady said he was aware of it and is supporting it too. So hopefully it is getting moved along. I wanted to share that. Yes. As far as the remote learning and because I have two students who've been in the district for eleven years now, eight years and eleven years. I know the method and and we've saved a lot of money as a district using white paper. That was recognized using the copy center and not having to buy textbooks and so forth. Unfortunately, it's probably put a strain on teachers now transitioning to the remote learning. So I just wanted to bring this up as a dialogue. That amendment, hopefully providing technology will support our students. But also the teachers needing to revise their lesson plan that they may have been using over the years with our copy center and handouts and white paper. Now, you know, the teachers are needing to transition as well. So it's it's challenging on both sides, families and teachers. So that's just my recognition and comment about that. Last question is the survey. And can you share how many responses you may have gotten already from families? Any feedback on that? And can it be maybe emailed out again in case anyone missed it?
Hang on, here we go.
It goes out the, every week it gets sent out, it gets to all the families. It's already been sent out, this may have from our technology department sent it out. And it's already been sent out to the staff. In the first two hours, we had six hundred and thirty six parent responses. Extrapolate from that what you will. And and then we had staff. So staff finishes on June the thirtieth. And then parents finish the night of July fifth. I have not looked at the data yet or pulled it yet because I want the complete set of data all at once. But it does go out weekly and it will continue to have another reminder.
And the final due date, I believe, was July fifth.
Yes, at the end of their night, you know, midnight on July fifth, whatever the fancy of the public is.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else before we move on to ELA curriculum? We're going to talk about budgets.
Good, Mr. Howard and Mr. Lytton, cheer his.
Go ahead, Mr. Howard, and then we'll go to Mr. Lytton.
Yeah, so more of a, I guess, a question for Jeff and then I guess a little bit more of a comment. So I know in that reopening guidance, there's a section in there that talks about additional guidance forthcoming from DESI. And there's a whole bunch of stuff. As you alluded to, but you know, in the upcoming week, which is super helpful for you guys, I'm sure, as you're trying to build a plan for fall. So I know we're going to get some more stuff, as you alluded to with athletics and some of these other things, but transfer state, transportation specifically. When I looked at the guidance, there was nothing specific around any requirements. I know there was talk about reducing it to maybe a total of ten students on a bus. I didn't see anything in the document. And I'm just kind of thinking, and I know busing gets a little iffy because of how that flows through the town. Do you have town meetings that are less than thirty days away? I would really hate to be in a situation where, you know, we're busing half a dozen students per bus. And I think from previous conversations, we don't have enough buses. So what are you thinking in terms of is there, is that ship already sailed unfortunately? Or is there something that perhaps we should be talking about in advance of town meeting relating to busing just because of the way that that expense flows through? What are you thinking, Jeff?
So so the question was asked to the commissioner on regional transportation because it's it's mandated by law. And we got the, we'll get back to you on that. Because that was a question asked by another superintendent in another region. Right now, it's still required as for for us, and that would require something from the legislature to to revise that that piece of legislation. John Tuffy actually asked the, had a conversation with First Student today. And they don't have additional buses and they don't have additional drivers. So depending on the recommendations by DESI, and again, we had heard, you know, less than ten kids on a bus. Then we heard kids on a bus with masks on, one per seat. I I I don't know if that's thirty. I I don't know what that means. On the survey, we did ask parents if they were going to let their kid, let their student ride a bus or if they were willing to to drive them. I think once we hear the guidance, and again, this, the transportation thing has been a hot button for the commissioner. And he's a, I don't want to say he's avoided that, but he's been pushing it along to all of us since since May. Not only am I concerned about our regular education students, our our local North River Collaborative, Fox Transportation. Fox Trans, nobody's transporting kids over the summer right now because the guidance is one person per van. And they can't function as a business with one child per van. Or if they do, we will go out of business because we won't be able to afford those those transportation costs. So right now, we're with the summer, we still are providing transportation for kids at our collaboratives for their E S Y programs. And 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 we're we're bleeding right now because of the cost, because they can't, they have enough people to to transport their kids that are are E S Y kids to their collaborative placements one at a time. That's not a, I had a conversation with Steve Donovan, who's the director at North River. That's not their preference. They're here to work with us. They're not here to to charge us more, but those are the guidelines. So though our local vendors for sped transportation are anxiously awaiting new guidance as well. I I, Chris, I don't know how we're going to get kids here if there's a ten, ten student requirement and required by law to bus them. There won't be enough buses for between the communities who use First Student. There won't be enough drivers out there. So I think once the commissioner sets out that guidance and the data we get from the surveys, and that's why I go back to, I hope parents fill this out. We will also resurvey and contact those families again to find out what the actual numbers are going to be. How we how we transport kids to school. The other other pieces, if we do have to make multiple runs, what does that mean for timing of school? As kids, you know, do they come in at, you know, six forty five and then seven thirty? What does that mean? So we have, we have those things in process as well. Just another thing we'll be working on over the summer. So I hate to give you a roundabout answer, but there's really not a defend, a lot of definitive on transportation. And once we get that, we'll we'll bring that out to the community and to this committee.
Mr. Lytton, you've been diligently waiting. Thank you. The comment about COVID. The Commonwealth put up two hundred million dollars. That's dedicated to the cost related to reopening public schools. Schools are eligible to receive up to two hundred and twenty five dollars per student. Eligible costs, which include training for school staff, supplemental, social and academic services, reconfiguration of school spaces, leasing of temporary facilities and acquisitions of health and hygiene supplies. So if you weren't aware of that, I wanted to make sure you were. Okay. Thanks, Frank. Any help before we move to ELA curriculum? Okay.
So as I mentioned at our last meeting, we were hoping that we were going to get a fifty percent reduction in in First Student Transportation. Mr. Tuffy worked diligently with other members of of business directors in our lo- in our local area to reduce that cost to thirty five percent of what we paid for for the the months of March, April, May and June, leaving us a little bit more money. So I'm asking this committee if I can, instead of moving that transportation savings, instead of rolling that into E and D, which will not be accessible until October, to purchase at least a portion of our three year ELA curriculum that was presented on the overall budget. We, it's about a hundred and forty five thousand dollars that we would be paying fourth of a three hundred and eighty four thousand two hundred and eighty six dollar bill. We're trying to splice that into three. So we'd like to pay a hundred and forty five of that upfront this year. Out of that, that money that we would be saving from First Student Transportation.
Entertaining motion.
Mr. Small make that motion discussion.
Mr. Boyce will second.
Okay, continue on, Jeff. That hundred and forty five thousand you're talking about will come off the top budget number because I know that's going to be the next question.
Yes. If that, if it's approved, yes.
Anyone else have any questions for superintendent? This requires a vote.
So uh so theoretically, that will come off of our budget number now. Uh but because if we kept the money, it would have to come back and go into E and D.
Then you can't touch it until October.
Right. There's no other way to spend it, so to speak.
Anything that's that's rolled over after tomorrow will will roll over into E and D. And that won't be certified until the middle of October. So my thought when I spoke to you last was to be able to take some money off of off the budget and lower the assessment even by this amount of money. Instead of letting that that capital that we're we're getting roll over into excess and deficiency. Correct.
Okay, and our E and D stands at, what was it, six seventeen? I believe.
Well, we did move six oh five. We did move three fifty if the twenty twenty one budget is approved. And right now, there's still, and again, I don't want to get off into a tangent with budget, so I want to stop there.
Yeah, we'll get to that, Fred, in a minute.
Okay.
Thank you. And Dawn?
Thank you. Jeff, can you talk about E and D as it relates to the downgraded document for our rating for E and D?
I I would rather not until we talk about budget.
Yeah, we'll get to that and budget, Dawn. This is I'm sorry, but let's stick with the ELA curriculum. Right now, I have a motion, a second. I see Hillary. I have a motion and a second. Dawn's not done yet.
That's okay. So I will, I will rephrase. Okay, I will rephrase my question or comment. So we are faced with, how much is this savings from First Student Transportation?
Off the top of, off, off the top of my head, I I I, all I know is that there there is a significant savings. That we were anticipating moving forward and putting into E and D when it was fifty percent. The number now gives us, affords us to purchase something that I spoke about. If we do remote or if we do a hybrid, this curriculum, which we haven't had since two thousand and one, will provide teachers some of that technology that you referenced, will be able to assist them in providing that education for those students at home. It's an online diagnostic diagnostic tool as well.
Right, and I support the ELA curriculum. It's in the current budget. And I would see it beneficial for the savings that we're going to see to be placed into E and D for future. Just as a, as a reflection of our E and D for the district. Given that we had six hundred and five thousand and we've used three hundred and fifty thousand, so right now it tells me it's two hundred and fifty five thousand.
Okay. Hillary?
I just had a question about the curriculum itself. And what, just because I'm new, just a little bit of background. Seeing that, so is it, it's not a curriculum per se, it's like a program? Like, like an online textbook type thing that the students can interact with? Like an iReady or MobiMax type thing?
Yeah, so so if I can, so it's Holden Mifflin, it's inter reading. We did run a pilot. That was the overall clear consensus winner. And one of the reasons why is because it supports notice and note and notice and note, one of the reading strategies that we use now from elementary through twelve. It also has a massive component like iReady, if you know it, where it's self diagnostic for students from a literacy standard, both literacy strands and for comprehension. It then also has a, as a full complement to our ELO coordination. And then it also does have multiple tiered levels for like your classroom reading set for your, I don't want to say level readers, because that's that's the, an old term, but I mean, it's the same fashion as that.
Differentiate instruction within it for the students.
There were fifty, there were fifty four people who in the district and we had representation from the K to six level who did it. There were about thirty eight on the on the other one that we did. And this one was by far the best choice. And so that's why we wanted to move forward with it. We had known somewhere, on March twenty seventh, I was supposed to announce it. And then we went remote, so we're doing it right now.
So it is something that if we do go to remote or hybrid, the teachers would be able to, like my students, they had iReady and MobiMax where they would work at their own level, but their teachers would also put lessons in there for them as well. And I, you know, you know that the students are working to their level.
Right, exactly. So and another way to say that is it could test your level of failure and then make the adjustments so you can keep learning while then working on the presentation material for that standard that you're currently on. So it reinforces and will extend at the very same time. Just like I, the diagnostic for iReady, except this is built into the whole package of it will spit out other pieces within the inter reading program that you can then move into also.
Sounds good.
Dan, Mr. Small is next, and then I'll move to you.
A couple of questions. One, we could spend the money and not touch the budget and just utilize the money to go toward the ELA curriculum. You know, number one, I believe. And number two, is there a way that that ELA curriculum or at least a portion of it can be considered a COVID related expense where it's going to provide a solution for remote learning?
I'm getting a no from Mr. Tuffy, so I would go with his on on that as a COVID related expense. Yeah, so he he's saying, he's saying no at this point. It would be a is it, can people hear me? Okay, all right. Michelle just said they, you guys froze. But Mr. Tuffy said, no, that wouldn't be a covered expense.
Okay, so we're looking at what, about a hundred and fifty thousand? Or a little bit more?
I'm I'm saying one forty five is what we put in the original budget, I believe.
Okay.
And it's a three year, we we approved math last year in a three year, it's a six year license, paying it over three years. They actually wanted more upfront, but we're we're working with them to do a three year deal as well for a six year license. We've, we, the district has cut the curriculum budget since I've been here, and we're trying to build up a curriculum cycle, a budgetary line for a curriculum cycle. So once math and E and ELA are paid for, we can start working on science and social studies K to twelve.
I have missed, I have missed the colliding and then Dawn. I'm sorry, Dan.
Yeah, well, part of what I just asked was one of my questions. Mr. Tuffy basically said it's a gray area. Don't go down that road.
Correct.
My second point is, it's more towards the budget, but because we have to close this out before we can talk about the budget. Where we already moved three hundred fifty and, three hundred fifty thousand out of E and D. We're very, very scarce on money now in E and D. We're playing around many variables. We don't know what we're getting. We don't know what our budget's going to be. We don't know what the chapter seventy funding is going to be. We can't play with E and D anymore. We're too, that's a one time hit. And if we're at two hundred and fifty some odd dollars, we're going to lose our credit ratings. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we're going to start losing, I mean, when I first came on, we had one point two million dollars to play with. We're down to three hundred and three hundred and change. That's not good business skills, and I know we need the the language arts, but we we should get out of this budget cycle with known facts. We don't have those facts there. Uh, we can't keep putting the the E and D down to pay for the school budget. E and D is supposed to be one-time funding, and we're moving it into pay for the budget all the time. That's very bad business skills. And this is, we're getting critical, so if we don't stop putting it back in, we don't know what we're getting back. You know, we were shooting for certain things, but the outlook keeps getting more bleaker and bleaker or we're getting back. That's all to say before we, just to have people had realized that, we need the, we do need ELA, but we might have to talk about this in the budget section.
Okay, Dan, you done?
Yeah, I'm done. Thank you.
No, thank you. Dawn.
Okay, so so thank you Chair Hayes. It's taken me a moment to understand what we're talking about and asking for right now. So we're looking to use these FY twenty funds that essentially expire tomorrow to purchase this curriculum, so that we know we will have it in our hands come July first. Because on July first, we will have a budget that won't allow us to just this curriculum. Because we're waiting on this budget to go to town meeting, and should it not get approved, then we're not able to purchase this curriculum.
Correct.
Okay, I needed to play that out for myself.
That's 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 why I I asked for a meeting prior to the close of the fiscal year. Um, so we could we could move forward, one specifically, in the case that, you know, we're under fiscal control, which we will be of the commissioner, and we, if town meeting does not pass this budget, at least I will be able to provide my teachers and our students something um that works remotely and 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 live. So it's a it's a good product.
And it's a tool that they should have in their job.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Colley, do you still have a question?
Uh, no, that I didn't talk about that.
Yeah.
Sit down, Bob.
Mr. Howard.
Yeah, so Dawn, I think you just clarified it. I think that's what I wanted to clarify. Let's make sure we have this because we don't know what's going to happen with the budget. And then to Mr. Small's point, um, look, I we gotta we gotta be honest and and forthright, so I I would never suggest otherwise. However, I do still have that reopening document guidance open, and there is a section that talks about twenty-five million available for remote learning technology grants. A hundred percent state match for districts for their remote learning needs. So based upon this conversation, and they can feel free to pull the audio, I think what I just heard is we were really making sure that we would consider doing this to make sure that we can do remote delivery. So if there is any potential gray that we can use to make our money go a little further, if we could just please double check that.
We we we're going to try to get back as much as we can and and stretch it. But as John and John Stanbrook, Frank and I and John Tuffy spoke, what what we don't want to do is get an audit and have to give money back because we stretched it too much. So we will look.
So this this piece yet is not a reimbursement, this is a grant, right? So this is a so I if you look, you'll see it in the guidance, it's the second bullet, maybe a little different where Fred was going, but the same spirit. They're providing grants, a hundred percent state match is twenty-five million available for remote learning needs. This sounds like a remote learning need, so it might be worth a shot.
Yep, absolutely.
All they can do is say no.
Right.
Good point, Chris.
Yes, I agree, appreciate that.
Uh, now, the question is, and I'd make a motion, uh, you know, that we proceed with utilizing those savings in order to secure the ELA program. Uh, the question is, do we automatically change the budget?
I'm not, I'm not sure what that question was, Fred.
Well, Fred, we already have a motion in a second to accept the curriculum as proposed. We didn't have anything about the budget attached to it. We can do that when we get to the budget discussion, which is right after this.
So right now, we just be u- utilizing those funds uh to go toward the curriculum.
That's correct. That's correct. And then when we get to the budget, I can let you can make any motions you want.
Okay.
Okay? That satisfy you?
Sounds like a plan.
Anyone else?
Vote to vote.
Okay. Hearing none. Mr. Boyce.
Yes.
Spires.
Yes.
Mr. Colley.
Yes.
Mr. Ford.
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Sniffing.
Yes.
Mr. Scriven.
Yes.
Mr. Small.
Yes.
Mr. Hayes, yes. Okay, unfinished business, school budget discussion. Fred, you have your hand up.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jeff.
All right, thanks. So um I I I don't know if I want to, if you want to start with that transfer of E and D or that discussion or or move that along.
Go ahead, move along, and we'll see how it comes in.
Perfect. So so I had a conversation with Christine Lynch from Desi today. Believe it or not, uh, you know, I'm not on speed dial, but she's heard of us before. Um, good conversation. I was actually asking her and begging her if we could get the budget numbers from the commissioner today so I could show them to you tonight. Uh, she said no. Uh, I will have them tomorrow. So I will email those out to you tomorrow when we have an idea of what the the one-twelfth budget will be for our district. Um, our conversation then went, I I I asked a clarifying question because it seemed like there was a lot of controversy about the statutory vote that the committee took in December. And I clarified with her the the same statements I've been saying to you and to the public since since December. That vote for statutory, that six-four vote, was a majority vote to provide George and I a a method of assessment for the budget that we were going to bring forward to the community on in February. It was a a non-binding vote, the the only binding vote can be a two-thirds majority of the regional school committee on the vote and the assessment methodology. The assessment methodology that the school committee approved nine to one was not statutory, and it was not amendment or agreement. It was an amendment to the agreement that was put forth in May to both communities. In tor- in turn, both the communities have to approve that method of assessment, the compromise, in other words, at both town meetings. But the school committee approved nine to one the method of assessment for the twenty-twenty-one budget. It wasn't statutory, it wasn't, it wasn't uh the agreement method either. So she and I talked a little bit. I said, was there anything illegal about the school committee giving me direction to um to move forward with a with a budget? She said, no, there wasn't anything illegal about it. The only the only time that the school committee can move a budget out of committee, and it's their job to move a budget out of committee, is a two-thirds majority of the assessment uh of the budget, which in turn uh clarifies the method of assessment. Again, I spoke to the Hanson, uh, the uh selectmen last week, and it's challenging to explain that. But the only of the only way a budget comes out of committee is two-thirds majority. This committee voted a two-thirds majority of of the compromise, which was a combination of statutory and agreement, and they vote and you voted a budget. It was nine to one on, I believe, uh, on the on the compromise, on the amendment, and it was zero on the budget. So there was nothing that the school committee did wrong. I wanted to clarify that with her. He did nothing wrong. Uh, we did nothing wrong, but for me to put a budget out to the committee, to the communities, the default method in in so many terms is the statutory anyway. So by the committee saying go six-four gave us an opportunity. And if if I can refresh everybody's memories, we did vote on a budget a few times, and it did not pass because the method of assessment was the statutory method. So the committee never moved a budget out of school committee to the towns. The only time we did that was a nine-to-one vote, more than two-thirds of the committee voted that. Um, so just to clarify for the committee and for for members of the community, the committee didn't do anything inappropriate, didn't do anything wrong. And again, that was a conversation I had with Christine Lynch. And on that topic as well, when I had her on the phone, I asked her how many regional school districts actually use the statutory method? And I did on our Q and A, it was the majority. She said there are eighty-four districts in the in the Commonwealth uh that are are viable, and ten use the agreement method. So the majority of communities use the statutory method. And um I think because because of our conversations of beginning last year, Desi is now requiring boards of selectmen to sign off if their communities use the agreement method. She actually said to me, she uh believes that the communities will will move towards statutory, and there will be less communities using the agreement method now that boards of selectmen are involved. That's that's just the conversation we had with her. So as of tomorrow, we will have a budget, a one-twelfth budget, and I wanted to again assert that that's based upon the statutory method. That's not a vote of this committee. It's not a vote of either communities right now. It's not my budget. The budget will come from the Commissioner of Education, Jeff Riley Riley and or designate based on what we know now, twenty-twenty numbers, or we're assuming twenty-twenty numbers, and based on the statutory method of assessment. So I'm assuming we will be able to provide both communities on Wednesday a document uh for their assessment of what the commissioner gives us. Uh, and we, the documents that we showed you, or I I presented uh to to this committee a couple of weeks ago, but I'll refresh right now. Uh, let me see, with my numbers. The one-twelfth budget um assessment. I have a few documents in front of me, so just bear with me. Um, using using FY twenty-one numbers, uh, which would be the FY twenty-one cherry sheet. Um, and minimum local contribution is of the operating budget for the town of Hanson, under the statutory method, one-twelfth uh would be eleven million, uh, three hundred ninety-seven thousand, two nineteen sixteen. And for Whitman, it would be fourteen million, two fifty-nine, five seventeen, eighty-four. Um, I believe those are the correct numbers, and um, let me see. If the commissioner, using FY twenty-one numbers, you, and if he allows us to use E and D or move any more circuit breaker, the Hanson assessment with three hundred fifty thousand E and D and another uh another uh amount of circuit breaker money, totaling seven hundred thousand dollars. We've already used uh four hundred and fifty and two hundred and fifty, so four hundred thousand. Hanson's total assessment under one-twelfth, using three fifty E and D and seven hundred circuit breaker, would be eleven million, one hundred fifty-six thousand, nine seventy-nine, sixteen. And Whitman's assessment would be thirteen, eight nine nine, seven five seven, and eighty-four cents. That would be using fiscal twenty-one cherry sheet numbers. Using fiscal twenty cherry sheet numbers, which is chapter seventy, and and uh local minimum contribution, no E and D. This is, again, the one-twelfth budget that I'm looking for, that to to that will be given to us using the chap- the FY twenty numbers. I'm looking at Hanson's overall assessment to be thirteen, or excuse me, eleven, three seven four, four one three forty-six, and Whitman's fourteen, three nine two, two four three, fifty-four. That's using FY twenty numbers for the one-twelfth budget. If the commissioner allows us to use E and D and circuit breaker, using the FY twenty cherry sheet numbers and local minimum contributions, we're looking at Hanson being eleven, one three four, one seven three four six, and Whitman being fourteen, zero three two, four eight three, five four. And for clarity's sake, the FY twenty-one budget that we presented to the communities was fifty-five million, three twenty, two thirty-eight. And the compromise assessment using using E and D and circuit breaker, the Hanson total assessment would be eleven, seven, four, five, zero, two, zero, twenty-one. And Whitman's would be fourteen, or excuse me, sixteen, two zero six, two sixteen, seventy-nine. That number I would still like us to use at town meeting as the budget presented uh by the regional school committee. So those are the, those are the numbers that are out there. Um, again, I'm not sure what the commissioner is going to provide me tomorrow. If that's very different, I will definitely share that with you, but we will share the numbers anyway. Uh, but those are the numbers that we're expecting, um, the fiscal twenty numbers. Um, a- as far as a one-twelfth, uh, the fiscal twenty numbers based on uh twenty-twenty-one, chapter seventy, and uh local minimum contributions, and fiscal twenty number cherry sheet, uh, chapter seventy numbers and local minimum contributions. Those aren't great, great changes, but I wanted the school committee to have those numbers, and those are the documents I sent you a couple of weeks ago anyway. And the new folks, if you don't have those, Michelle will make sure that you have those numbers as well and those sheets as well. So that's where we are with budgets. Um, the other piece of budget before we get into any discussion, um, I'm just going to read, and I sent this to you as an attachment today right before the meeting, and it's highlighted uh just what what happens if we don't have uh an approved budget by either community in July. And this is the other piece of information that I spoke with Christine Lynch today. So let me just read this out loud. Um, this is a Desi document. Again, I sent it to you. In the event that the regional school district budget is not approved by at least two-thirds of the member municipalities, that doesn't include us because we're a two-member district, so we need, we need both members to approve our budget. The regional school district shall have thirty days to reconsider, amend, and resubmit a budget. That doesn't mean we need thirty days, but we have up to thirty days. With approval of the commissioner, a regional school district commu- uh committee may have an additional fifteen days to which reconsider, amend, or reapportion the budget. But also, according to Christine, doesn't mean we have to change anything uh if the budget is voted down. The committee doesn't have to change anything. They could if they wanted to, but they don't necessarily have to. The budget shall be reapportioned between or among the member municipalities, and a copy of the amended budget shall be provided to the chairman of the board of selectmen, chairman of the finance committees, mayors, presidents of the city councils, and treasurers of the member municipalities, no later than seven days from the date of the amended budget that the amended budget was adopted by the school committee. Approval of a reconsidered budget by local appropriating authorities prior to the expiration of forty-five days. So Christine explained that to me, that once the school committee provides a budget to the both boards of selectmen and FinComs, the town, the 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 selectmen have up to forty-five days to put budget forth to a town meeting. So prior to the expiration of forty-five days from the date of which such budget was adopted by the regional school committee, each member municipality should hold a meeting of the local appropriating authority to act upon the appropriation of the budget. If two-thirds of the member municipalities vote to appropriate the amounts, reapportion and recertified to them under the statutory method, such budget shall be considered approved. That doesn't, that's two-thirds um of of a of a three-member district, and if they're approving a statutory method. If members of the municipalities unanimously approve to appropriate the amount, so apportion and recertified to them under the agreement alternative method, such a budget shall be considered approved. Now, what's different for us is really the amendment to the agreement is an alternative method, and both communities need to agree to that amendment anyway to approve that. So that would be for us, and both towns need to agree with to this any anyway. We need both mun- both member towns to agree to anything for us to pass. If local appropriating authority does not vote on the revised budget within forty-five days, a forty-five-day period, the member that that member shall be deemed to have approved the revised budget. So if both member towns do not hold a town meeting in that forty-five-day period, the revised budget passes. Okay? Where the local appropriating authority is a town meeting and the annual town meeting is dissolved prior to voting on the budget, the budget shall be deemed disapproved by that member as such a date of of dissolution. If a district has three or more members, um, I I'm going to skip that because we don't have three or more members. District-wide meetings. In the case of a two-member regional school district, if the appropriating authority of either member uh town votes not to appropriate the amounts, so apportion and recertify it, the regional school district meeting committee shall convene a district-wide meeting at which the revised budget and assessments shall be placed before all voters eligible to vote. A district-wide meeting shall only consider ba- budgets based on the statutory assessment method. Notice of that meeting must be given fourteen days prior to the date of such meeting. Approval of the regional school district budget shall require an affirmative vote of at least a majority of those present and voting there thereon by a counted vote. If a majority of voters at this meeting votes to approve a greater or lesser amount of the budget, such budget should be placed before the regional school committee me- committee for its ratification. If the school little school committee by a two-thirds vote ratifies this amount, it shall If the school, the school committee by a two thirds vote ratifies this amount, it shall be considered constitute approval. If the regional school committee rejects such greater or lesser amount, it shall again reconsider amend and adopt a revised budget. That shall reconvene a district wide meeting. So lots of information there. However, that's the mode to the to the towns or to the regional school committee. To get a budget if the budget does not pass. In Whitman or Hanson, or if the amendment to the agreement does not pass in both Whitman or Hanson. We need a four for four or a two for two in both communities to pass this through. If it's not passed, the towns or the regional school committee has up to forty five days to resubmit a budget to the communities. The communities then, once that budget is approved by the school committee, has forty five days to hold a town meeting. If town meetings vote that budget down, the regional school committee then can reassess and hold a district wide meeting. And post that meeting for fourteen days prior to to meeting. And if the, excuse me, the the super town meeting or district wide meeting is held. The statutory method is the only method of assessment that can be used at that meeting. So I have I have those those items out there just for for people to understand the process after town meeting. But and and what we have on on the table now as far as assessments for town meeting and assessments in a one twelfth budget.
I had Mr. Scriven, then Mr. Small.
Jeff, did I hear you say that? If the budget is not approved, we do not have to lower the assessment?
So according to Christine Lynch, if the budget isn't approved, the school committee can can has the authority to revise the budget. That doesn't mean you have to lower or approve that. You could actually send the budget right back. Without a revision.
So as you were reading further, it was referring to, I think the word was revised, I can't remember. Same process. Right, thank you. Mr. Small.
Yeah, and as a matter of fact, we could actually raise the budget if we wanted. As opposed to lower. My concern is. In, let's just call the elephant in the room, given that the override in Hanson failed. What is Hanson's ability? You know, if the bud, they pass a budget, which we need to have them pass a budget, we need to come up with that. Do they have that ability to be able to pay the bill, so to speak, without devastating that town? You know, I think, you know, I mean, we're we're facing total devastation ourselves, but. I don't know if any of you folks have heard from anyone with their free cash availability or stabilization availabilities, et cetera. Until they could perhaps hold a successful override.
I think Brad. The ability would come out of the meeting of the voters and then they would have to determine how they're going to do that. And find out what their ability to pay would be. But it all comes down to from what Mr. Simonak has just said unless somebody wants to correct me. This goes to town meetings, whether you call it a district wide town meeting or a regional. Or a super town meeting. It goes to the voters for approval, one way or the other. And then the town will have to figure out how, whether it's either town, depending on how it falls. How the payment would be made. I think that's up to the individual town themselves. I'm not quite sure whether they would have to stage. Would depend on what happened at that town meeting, I guess.
My biggest fear is we're already looking at the one twelfth as being bad. We're looking at our fifty five million dollar budget that we presented as. Being just treading water another year. And then face of the devastation of losing on chapter seventy, it's just very, very scary right now.
The whole ride's pretty scary. I see you, Chris. You said Fred, Chris, Howard?
Yeah, Fred, so I think to that point, and I think we've said it a few times now, right? The present budget that was voted out of school committee that sits with, for example, the town of Hanson sits around eleven, seven, five. That one twelfth budget is eleven four, so we're not talking about monumental differences. The one thing I guess I would just. I feel strongly about, and I guess I would kind of want the committee to at least consider this in some way, favorite form, is if we end up at a one twelfth budget. I am not in favor of using anything out of E and D or circuit breaker as an additional funding mechanism. So if we end up at a one twelfth budget, working our budget as presented by almost three million dollars. So I appreciate Jeff taking the time to put that sheet in. Thank you for doing that. But just before that sheet gets out and people start looking at the lowest number. That alone four, to me, is 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 as low as it goes unless there's something wild that changes. I I would not be in favor based upon the discussions we've already had as a committee of of then knowing. Of cutting our budget by three million dollars and then taking additional funds out of E and D on top of that. Given what Fred just talked about, the storm clouds are coming, so to me, that's that's. I I hope to God we don't have to deal with a one twelfth budget, but if we do, I am not in favor of using the the E and D funds.
Couldn't agree more.
Anyone else? Dawn? Dawn, go ahead.
Thank you. Jeff, I just want to look back at the. Modified statutory method document and the numbers. I just want to clarify what you read. This would be what school committee approved. The amendment, the fifty fifty. Only because when you were reading through the numbers. The Whitman number read was sixteen point two million, and I think I just want to clarify that that's not the operating. Assessment that was including, you know, the high school debt and the non-manned busing.
Yes.
Okay.
Whitman and Hanson numbers, that's the total assessment that both communities will receive. The operating assessment for both communities, not including non-manned busing, capital, capital tech, capital HVAC. The the Hanson assessment with the compromise is eleven, two, one, four, one, seven, six, seven, nine. And Whitman is fifteen, three, six, seven, three, nine, one, seven, five.
Thank you. Okay, and that's what we have approved right now. And yes, because someone said, where did that sixteen point two number come from? So because we've generally been talking about the just the operating assessment, so I wanted to confirm that.
Well, those numbers have been flipping flopping back and forth from the communities. I I got the question on on the total operating budget from each community, so now I'm using the. The actual number of what's going to be assessed to the community. We have used as a school committee, really, the the operating piece. And then again, members of the communities wanted to know, so what's the total assessment, including all of their debt as well? So, yep, those are the correct numbers, Dawn.
Okay, and Chair Hayes, I I recognize. It will be up to the voters, as you said, for them to decide what they want to approve. But through you, I want to acknowledge Mr. Small's comment. As committee members, I believe Mars does ask us to know where our member towns stand. And as Mr. Small said, you know, what does both towns have in free cash? What do they have available and what is their spending like? That would be responsible of us as committee members to know where our two towns are. So that's certainly a valid question, you know, what funds are available? And I just wanted to. Say that, thank you.
Before we go to the next to your question, there is a very strong rumor out there. We may be meeting with both boards of selectmen sooner than later, so the meetings, if anybody thinks that we're going to have. We may be having weekly meetings in July to get through this. There's going to be several meetings. So if that answers your question, we may get to that, Harry.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Dan, Dan, and then Chris, did you have your hand up, Chris Scriven?
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dan. My question goes towards starting tomorrow, we're on the one twelfth budget. We're going to be on, how does it get paid once and if we ever get a budget? Together, we're starting out on one twelfth automatically because we default it.
What's your question, Dan? How does it get paid?
Yeah, how is that going to get paid? And then we go and get a better budget than the one twelfth that falls back. You know what I'm saying? Like, right now, we're going technically if we go by the. Twenty fiscal twenty twenty instead of the twenty one, is that how? Or does it just wait till we get to some point where we come up with a budget?
So my, this is John Tuffy. My understanding is that the commissioner is going to set a budget that that is an expenditure limit. Doesn't tell us what we can spend it on, but it gives us a total amount that we can spend. And that will be based on the twenty twenty, the current budget that we're living with right now. Now, through July and August, those are numbers that we probably live with comfortably because we don't have the expense of the teacher payroll and the other. Payrolls that go when schools in session. In terms of the cash flow that we'll get. We currently get chapter seventy eight and twelve payments at the end of every month. We'll continue to get those payments, so come the end of, so actually come tomorrow, we'll be getting a payment, which will be the last payment for fiscal twenty. And then the end of July, we would get our check, get our chapter seventy eight. Based on what chapter seventy was in in fiscal twenty. Now, the difference between twenty and twenty one is projected to be about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, so that's not a big number. In terms of what we were expecting to get. The state will also set an assessment that will be, that we will use to send to our towns. And the town will then pay us that assessed amount set by the state on the regular schedule that currently exists. So we would get an assessment from from Hanson and from Whitman in August.
So everybody understand that it's it's pretty clear of what, and I think what you what you said in the very beginning, John, was. One twelfth, you mean one twelfth out of a full year, out of twelve months, get a payment every month. When you run one twelfth.
That's correct.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Because I just want to make sure we have money going forward if we get into one of these situations where. You know, we didn't pass the budget, now we're getting into that close to October timeframe. You know, we got to make sure we can cover the payroll and all that type of thing.
Exactly.
Jeff, can you clarify that? Hold on, because that's a really important point. In terms of payroll, if we're on one twelfth, aren't we making a payroll adjustment? Don't we have to make that adjustment to the budget or payroll before?
That's my concern.
Yes, yeah, that's going to be a problem. I mean, that's that's my concern. That's that entails the layoffs because when we get our check or the assessment for August. And we start teachers payroll at the end of August, I won't be able to make payroll based upon the numbers that I get tomorrow. That's where we lie. We are short two point six, two point four million dollars. Because of our our projected expenses of fiscal twenty to fiscal twenty one. And that's payroll, that's that's all our costs associated with running a school district. So the numbers that I took, again, I took twenty six teachers, that would cover a certain amount of money. But we have to, we have to include unemployment. We pay forty cents on the dollar. So I have to include money to cover the unemployment cost of those twenty six teachers, which brought us up to between thirty eight and forty positions. And we won't make payroll, we won't make payroll in August if we're on a one twelfth necessarily. We might be able to make one week's payroll, and that's a calendar decision. But we won't be able to let our teachers know where we are until the budget's either approved or not approved at town meeting in July. Or whether or not we can have another town meeting or a super town meeting before school starts. That's my concern. Huge concern.
Yeah, while you're on it, not not to jump in on anyone else, but when you talk about the number of layoffs. We had a large discussion and I knew we'd want to bring this up at the budget time. Can you explain why we sent out so many pink slips reducing force? Versus what we're actually laying off. A lot of people, you know, use the term, oh, you sent out a ton to scare everybody. Can you explain why that happens? Again, because it seems that.
So so without without a budget, all non PTS staff, all professionals, all non-professional status teachers. That have been here less than three years by June fifteenth need to be notified whether or not they have a position for the upcoming school year. We don't have, we don't have a budget, so I I had to give a reduction in force letter to all of those non PTS staff. The challenge here is a lot of our non PTS staff are positions that we might be, that might be outside the classroom. So our school nurses, our school psychologists, positions that are are needed for next year will not be necessarily a reduction in force. So we had to then go to professional status teachers who might have bumping rights within the WHEA contract. And that's why we ended up moving into a hundred and seventy reduction in force. Letters by contract, we had to notify teachers, even with professional status, that they might, their position might be might be moved. So for instance, all of our reading specialists are, or seven of the eight reading specialists are professional status teachers. They are allowed to bump. Teachers without, with less status. We actually had to go into calendar year or school year fifteen, sixteen, professional status teachers. To to give them a reduction in force letters, notifying them that a reading specialist potentially could be bumping into their position. Or another teacher who was bumped by a reading specialist could bump into position. So in turn, as I said before, we were looking at a hundred, at forty positions, that's the number that we're looking at. As a loss in a one budget. However, we had to look at our contract. Our 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 agreement with the WHEA and teachers with bumping rights had to be notified. If in turn, they would have the opportunity to bump somebody with less status in the association. That's why a hundred and seventeen went out. And and the law, again, I reiterate the law of non PTS. And off the top of my head, last year, we put sixty two non PTS numbers out because we were concerned about a budget. By law, by June fifteenth, we had to notify all our non-professional status teachers, and that's more than sixty in addition.
Okay, so anyone listening to this, if that doesn't answer your question, it's pretty clear. We have to do things by legal status of how we do. A professional teacher staff. So we sent out a hundred and seventeen RIF notice, reducing force. We did not say at any point. We were reducing one hundred and seventeen teachers. Hear me clearly, we never said that. We said that we are reducing force roughly forty teachers and staff, not all teachers. But in order to do that, in simple layman's terms, by law, we have to notify potential people that could get bumped. Does that sum it up, Jeff?
And I'll I'll give you, that really sums up, but I'll give you another, for instance. We reduced at the high school a social studies teacher who's professionally status. It was a cut because we cut a a a social studies position. That teacher could then bump another professional status teacher at another school. So those are two non-professional status teachers that one was being moved because we eliminated the position at the high school. That teacher then could bump another professionally status teacher because we we didn't have, we don't have any more non PTS teachers. In social studies at this point. That's why so many letters had to go out. That's why this was another challenging task to make sure we covered our basis legally and by contract with our association.
Okay, Mr. Small was next, and then Mr. Colady, I'm sorry, Dan, if I got. Go ahead.
And through you, Chair Hayes, to answer Dawn's question, and I had someone far smarter than me. Look up these numbers, and what I don't know is how much of this might be encumbered. But for twenty twenty, Hanson did certify one million, six hundred and sixty four thousand in free cash. In stabilization, and that's the way it was said to me, it was a stabilization account, I don't know which one. And this is from two thousand and nineteen, one million, two hundred and five thousand. So I don't know what they may have spent before that. I don't know what they may have in their plans to spend on their warrant articles, et cetera. But if that gives a little bit of an idea for you, I did have those numbers available once I could find them on my desk here.
Thank you. Mr. Colady, thank you for your patience, Dan.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to follow up, you know, with that, you know, so it was a hundred and seventeen potential.
Yes.
Teachers being laid off, but in reality, we're probably going to be near forty-ish because of the one twelfth going backwards to last year's budget.
Correct, so so we've already had a teacher leave. They took another position because they. Correct. So so we've already had a teacher leave. Uh, they took another position because they were afraid they were going to lose their position. Uh, that saves another teaching position. That position's eliminated, but um it saves a person that was here because somebody chose to leave already. So, yeah, we're looking at at thirty five to forty, give or take, where we end up with what the commissioner says. Again, the commissioner can can give us a a level funded budget of 2020, or that commissioner can give us added funds. I I just don't know what that's gonna what that's gonna be. Tomorrow, I'll have a better idea. Also, understand that any reduction in force person who doesn't have a contract or a a a letter of of assurance that they're coming back to the regional school district can start collecting unemployment July 1st. That's an unexpected cost to us already. So the more we can we can move to get a budget certified uh by our local communities, the better off we are. But teachers will be unemployed without a contract um starting July 1.
And that's that's what our goal here is. We have to really concentrate on is sooner the better, less bleeding.
Correct.
The more we go down the road, the more we're going to be losing.
Uh huh.
Just typical these towns, they keep kicking it down. It costs more.
And and but to Mr. Hayes, thi- this wasn't a bluff. I I I we don't, that's not a tactic I'm going to use. These are the real numbers. Uh, I I don't want to reduce my my teachers force when I'm going to need more teachers in less class, in more classroom space. So we're at a critical, critical shortage right now, and it it's about the dollars and cents. But this wasn't a bluff. I'm I'm very anxious about the fact that forty people will be collecting unemployment in July 1st, and that's an unex- unexpected expense uh for for next year.
I just wanted to get it out there, free and clear, Jeff. Sometimes we get wrapped up in it and and we had questions asked, and I just wanted to know the people know the numbers. Dawn, go ahead.
Thank you.
Jeff, would you be able to speak to the document of the downgraded bond rating at this time?
Sure, I could do that as well. So so I included in your packet, or not in your packet, but I sent out a memo we received um on Thursday about the downgrade of our uh standard and pores uh credit rating. We are moved to a a double double A minus, John? A double A minus from a double A. And basically, they're talking about our our E and D deficiencies. They're looking for us to carry more money in E and D um moving forward. Now, just letting you know that when I asked folks to move that three fifty from E and D um to 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 offset the assessments for fiscal 21, I'm I'm very sure that we'll be we'll be able to replenish that three fifty from the savings we we saw through the closure of COVID nineteen. So I'm assuming we're going to have six oh nine plus um in E and D in October uh with the replenishment of some of the costs or the the revenues that we didn't expend due to the closure of COVID nineteen. I can't give you a firm number on that because we're still closing the budget. But as soon as we can give you that number of what E and D is going to look like, uh once John gets those numbers, well, we'll be able to share that with you. But they're looking for us to carry more than six fif- six hu- six hundred thousand dollars. They're looking for us to get uh, we can carry up to five percent of our budget. Uh, I don't think we've ever had five percent of our budget in E and D. But as Mr. Colady said, back in the day, there used to be a million plus in E and D. Uh, we were at six oh nine when they looked at uh at our numbers. So, yeah, our credit rating went down from a double A to a double A minus.
Okay, we've heard a lot of budget numbers tonight. David, Hillary, you both still want to stay?
I have a question. I have a question, actually. I in this is more clarification. So I, correct me if I'm wrong, but are either of the towns uh protesting the budget number of fifty five million? Because and Jeff, you can correct me if I'm wrong. It doesn't seem like anything's being added to the budget. It's just level, level services, so to speak. I mean, if you cut, what, last year, there were nineteen teachers cut?
Nineteen, twenty-two, yep.
And so you're adding, did you add four positions in this budget? But those are, they're not the same. I mean, so level service, there are different positions that you added, correct?
Correct.
So you lost twenty positions. You got four back, so sixteen say. Um, is are are people saying the budget is too high? Or is the pushback the assessment? Because my understanding is that it's not necessarily what, I mean, as a citizen of the town, as a teacher myself, as a parent, you know, a level serviced budget is not really ideal. You know, you want to be adding services and adding opportunities for the kids, not just like keeping status quo every year because things change. I mean, look at, you know, just since March, the remote learning and the things that our students have to do, the training the teachers need. Um, so I guess I just need clarification on that. Is it is it a budget number that we're being told? You know, I wasn't on the school committee when the budget was passed, but is the feedback that that's too high of a number? Or is the feedback the assessment, meaning the way that the towns are going to pay for that budget? Like, I I I just need, I think those those are two separate issues. Um, my understanding, and I think a lot of people in Hanson were under the impression that the override was to make the schools better, and a level service budget is not making a school better. Um, and so I just, I I don't know if we could provide clarification, and I know that you have because I've been listening for the last six months. Um, but those are just questions and things that need to be out there for people to understand. I mean, you know, the foundation budget isn't much, and our this budget is not much over that. So and again, you know, level service, what does that mean? It means you get the exact same things. Nothing more, right?
So 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 basically, to in a nutshell, yes, we're really looking at level service plus plus four teachers. The contractual expenses that went up for salaries, the contractual expenses that went up for SJ services and our other for for first student, we did add uh special education because we were very concerned about our special education population. So we did add that to the to the budget number. But really, realistically, this was a level service budget, not adding, we added the curriculum. It was on that as a piece because we also felt we needed that. We absolutely.
Haven't had one since two thousand and one, correct?
Correct. So to go back to that, no one in either community has approached me to say our budget number is too high. It's been about the assessment figure. Um, so and I don't think anybody has come to this committee to say your budget is too high. We've been told to sharpen our pencils a little bit, but I'm not really sure what that means. And we've never been given a, or at least I I can't speak we. I haven't been given a number to say, hey, look, this is the number that that we can, we you should be targeting a as a budget number. Uh, this committee was very outspoken to add four positions back um that we lost last year to reduce class size. Um, that was a, and again, the budget passed ten to zero. So to 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 go back to, I haven't, or the committee hasn't been asked publicly to lower the budget, but there has been definite conversations since September about the assessment methodology and then the assessment number um going forward. And yes, I would love to start looking at what we could add. Um, I've been a superintendent for less than two, two, two fiscal years, and all we've done is reduce. Um, George has been here for fifteen plus years. I've been here for ten, ten plus, and we've been reducing and reducing. There was a spot that we started to rebuild and add, and then we've hit hit a real roadblock. Um, our priorities have been student related, student, social, emotional learning. We did add positions last year. We really would have cut twenty two positions, but we we um we added three adjustment counselors at our elementaries. And I think they have been ve- very worthwhile expend expenses. Um, so we did add through through subtraction last year. So this budget is level service. We're not providing anything new. It doesn't include full day K. It doesn't include a robotics program. It doesn't include foreign language that we lost at the middle level. It doesn't include a lot. So we are stagnant, and it was level service uh who would follow plus those four staff members specifically to try to reduce class size at the elementary level where classes were up to twenty seven and twenty eight in elementary. So yes, Miss Niffen, that that's basically where we were at.
Okay, so you can see the picture. Tomorrow, we're going to get the numbers, and Jeff's going to send them out to all the school committee members of what the one twelfth budget's going to look like. We're going to move on from budget discussion because basically I don't hear of anything new coming out. We will know the number tomorrow, and we probably are going to reconvene in a week. I I'll just look at it quickly and see. I, you know, July's coming, and I know it's a tough month, but this is a, this is a tough school issue that we have to work our way through, and that's why we we're all here. So consequently, we're going to move on from the budget discussion. We will let you know tomorrow what the one twelfth means. And as I said, there there's there's rumor that we're going to be meeting with the boards of selectmen in in the near future and and try to work through this. So Jeff, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Just letting the committee know, the way Desi rolls is I'll probably get something after five P M tomorrow. That's 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 been my, if it was a Friday, it would be at seven. Uh, but you know, I got something this afternoon, but I'm sure it's going to roll out after five tomorrow. So don't be waiting at your computers at nine A M expecting something from you, Desi. Um, like to just look at the the school calendar. I I mentioned maybe moving the school start date. I have a proposal uh of of moving that start date uh for students uh from the twenty sixth of August to September eighth uh the day after Labor Day. And if you hear me out, um, we'd like to start teachers in on on August twenty seventh um and and twenty eighth. Um, and then, as I mentioned before, the commissioner is looking to add three professional days for us. We'd like to have those teachers in on the first, the second, and the third of September, and then students can return on the eighth. That would give us ample time, hopefully, to prepare our classrooms with any other guideline that might come out from the commissioner on on P P E and any other changes to our plan. Uh, that just gives us a little, really two weeks additional time before kids come back to school. And I think it'll also give us some breathing room if in case we have to have an additional town meeting uh before our teachers arrive on the twenty fourth, because they won't start working until the twenty seventh. So I'd like to uh to ask the committee to to look at the school start date for students being the eighth of of September, the day after Labor, the day after Labor Day.
Ladies and gentlemen, it also gives us a little bit more room for the COVID nineteen regulations and guidelines. You know, they, that's that's definitely a fluid conversation that's going to change. So this, I'm I'd be looking before we get into it uh for motion.
Motion to amend the school calendar as Jeff had just described.
Second, Mr. Boyce. Mr. Boyce. Mr. Colady made the motion. Mr. Boyce seconded it. Discussion. Mr. Colady, then Mr. Small.
Jeff, um, does this push back the end date?
Yes, it will.
Okay, what when would the eight the end date be?
Well, you have to, you have to ask me a difficult question. I've been looking at the start date. So so yeah, it.
I think it's around June twenty.
Yeah, all right. No, I did, because I only want to know because with COVID, I do, you know, all this stuff that's going on. We're probably going to have to revisit this again because we may have to do something with vacations if we, you know, be the way it's come on as they are.
I think it's, I think it's the twenty fourth. But one of the things that I'm looking at, too, is if we have a good, robust, remote learning plan, we won't have any snow days next year. It'll be a remote learning day. So we'll be rolling one seventy seven from the date of school. Uh, and I think if if you you do the start date for me on the eighth, we'll get the official school calendar updated from Michelle. Remember, we also were looking at taking September fourteenth off for the marathon. That won't be included anymore. We don't have a marathon, and that's not a state holiday anymore. So we'll get a revised calendar for you um as far as that, those dates. And if we have to adjust at in mid-year, well, we will do so. But I was just looking for the the dates of the eighth. Sorry for not having.
That one seventy seven, is that set in stone, or is that?
That it was, it was at, it was at the Board of Education today as a discussion item. But I have a feeling the commissioner was very strong on trying to get get that through so teachers could adequately have professional development um to come back and look at that remote plan or have discussion about the remote plan uh in case we go back, we go out again. So he was pretty adamant to us that that was a goal of his to move the school calendar to one seventy seven.
Just we have so much, we just have so much fluency here. It's
Yep.
Very tough for you guys.
Mr. Small.
Uh, would that add an extra week of payroll? Whereas if we didn't do it on the twenty sixth, but uh delayed everyone to say the thirty first of August, and then, you know, roll that into a September payroll perhaps? Would that be to our benefit with the one twelve?
So so potentially, and potentially, no. Our scheduled payroll is for the twenty seventh. That's what we've had our teachers base their their livelihoods on through the summer. And I'd work with the association to to not, to to make sure that our teachers are being paid so that if they have a mortgage payment that they're counting on a on an August twenty seventh payroll, and we wouldn't have payroll until September tenth, I think that would that would be challenging for for a lot of our faculty um budgetarily. So that's a conversation I'll have with the association. Uh, but we're scheduled right now for the twenty seventh uh to to start our our role. That's why we bring the teachers in on that day.
I definitely don't want to put anyone in harm's way, just worrying if we'll have the funds available.
So so I think, I think by that time, uh by by the twenty seventh, we should have an idea of what our budget is um to notify the staff if they're coming back or not. Um, if we don't have a budget or a regional district meeting, by that time, uh we're I I I have to plan. I have to plan for opening in the fall. So um, we're kind of kicking that can as long as we can.
We're definitely going to have a regional school committee meeting before then, probably seven. That answer, Freddie, you good? Anyone else before?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Chris.
So super quick, I just know when we were setting the schedule, I know there was pretty healthy feedback from both students, uh parents, and I think some of the teachers as well to try and get in early and end early. However, uh my comments now are strictly, I would hope that everyone understands, given what we've gone through with the pandemic pandemic and reopening, that everyone's doing the best they can. So I'm I'm hoping that we'll get the public's support and understanding. This may not be a permanent uh delay of, hey, we're going to go back late, but we really need it this year to just support everyone and and get things done that need to get done. So I'm hoping the public that's listening understands and supports us uh with this change this year. I know, I know folks originally were hoping to get kids back to school early, but we got to do this.
Hillary.
I was just going to piggyback that statement. Um, those three days of training are, I guess, the five days that you have scheduled in for teachers is going to be very valuable and needed. But both on the parent side, too. I mean, I think a lot of families had a hard time with the remote learning. You know, it was a learning curve for everybody, and regardless of what the fall is going to look like, everybody needs some time to prepare. And I know all of us parents would love to get our kids back to school soon. Um, but we need to also do this and do it well and do it right so that if there's a hybrid or a remote learning period that it's not as, um, I don't know, I I thought it was well done. But, you know, I I think that there there were things that, you know, kinks that need to be worked out. So that's all.
Okay. Anyone else before we move to the vote? Seeing none, Mr. Boyce. This is on the amendment to change the count. Okay. Yes, Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Spires?
Yes.
Mr. Colady?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
The sniffing?
Yes.
Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Mr. Scriv- Mr. Small?
Yes.
Bob Hage, yes. Okay, thank you. Next up, Whitman Middle School feasibility study. We have to establish a Whitman Middle School Building Committee.
I would be honored to be on that as I was on the high school building committee.
Dan, Dan Colady would like to be there, too?
Chris Scriven, too? Okay, let me just. Colady. Scriven.
Did you get me, Bob? Fred Small?
Yeah, I had you right up, Fred. I didn't even ask. I had you out of the gate.
It's so much fun building the high school, you know?
Why why waste any time asking? I knew you were in. Mr. Colady, would you like to speak to me? I I see your hand up.
Oh, no, I was to get the uh.
Okay. Anyone else like to be on the on the uh building committee? Dawn?
How many are you looking for or allowed?
Probably four. Because we're going to take, the the Donna Whitman's going to want some residents. They're going to want a bunch of people.
We have to have. And I believe they have to have someone with engineering or architectural background on the committee, you know, as a resident.
Yep. Dawn?
Yeah, during this year, um, can someone give some background on the timing um during this feasibility period?
Okay, the timing, it starts out pretty soon, and the meetings go slow until you get closer to building the school, and then it sometimes becomes a weekly issue. Um, as as the school gets into more and more bits and pieces and discussions, when you get into the design phase, it it at least becomes twice a month. But at any particular point, everything comes back to the committee.
Right.
So if you Fred?
No, I'm, I'm just thinking, I'm just trying to recall, uh, is it the feasibility, the study committee that selects the architect? Or is it the entire school committee? I'm trying to remember. I thought it was the. Do they bring it back?
Yes. Even though it's a Whitman project, remember we did the Hanson project?
Yeah, I, I remember that, but I came in on the tail end of that, uh, so to speak, and the architect was already picked.
It's, uh, i- i- it's a lot of stuff, but let me tell you, from being involved with some, it's very educational. It really is. You learn, you learn a lot about the school design and what goes on and, and what takes place. It's, it's pretty interesting. It is time consuming, but it's interesting. So Dawn, if you wanna get on and, and then you decide you want off, there's now this, there'll be others. Unless somebody else from Whitman wants to be on it. I don't see anybody.
No cats, though.
Okay, so so far, Colley, Scriven, Small. And, uh, the town's gonna send guidelines, I'm sure, if it's going to be, I know Johnny Galvin wants to be on it. Um, he is on the finance committee. He's a good guy. So, uh, and as Fred said, there has to be somebody with some architectural design, some engi- um, some engineering backgrounds, and you learn, you learn plenty of people coming forward from the town of Whitman when this, when this moves forward. And it'll move forward kinda quickly all of a sudden as soon as feasibility goes out, it needs to be been awarded, so. That, that's an exciting project, and the town of Whitman really, really needs to. The, the needs for that school are huge, so hopefully everything moves smooth. I, I know I've been to Whitman Middle many, many times. It's probably a lot of committee members are. It definitely needs to be done. So, proposed a regional agreement amendment, consideration of the changes from the town of Whitman. This is not a vote. Jeff, would you like to go over some of those changes?
So, so we spoke about this last, last committee meeting, and I reached out to Mr. Stanbrook, and we were waiting to hear from Hanson and the Hanson, uh, 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 legal counsel, and he said he has not received anything yet, uh, from his legal counsel. So if we're planning on having another regional, uh, uh, another school committee meeting shortly, I'm hoping to hear uh, Hanson's, Hanson's thoughts on the amendment or the changes from Whitman Council before this committee votes on it. So John said today he would reach out again to council to find out where they're at. Uh, John was away the week of our school committee meeting. Uh, he returned back from vacation last Monday. Uh, he and I went back and forth a little bit, and then I tried to see if he got anything back today. Prior to this meeting, he had said he had not. Uh, I did invite him to this meeting just to see if, if, if he had any other information, and I don't think he, he's attending this meeting, so. But Bob, if you're saying that we're gonna be meeting with selectmen in the future too, I think they might be able to brief us on, on those changes to the amendment that we're proposing for the warrants in both communities.
Okay, so we're gonna, uh, table this until we have more information that's available. As I said to you, we're going to be probably having more meetings. Hopefully, phase three is going, coming up, and our meetings will be able to be back in the library. Um, so we can have some input from public and, and, uh, I'll see each other without doing it on a Zoom. It seems like those meetings are, uh, see you, Mr. Colley. It seems like those meetings be, have more fruit sometimes. We need that socializing part of it, so. Okay, unentertained emotions, adjourned.
The move by Dan.
Thank you. Chris Scriven had something, Bob.
Chris, I'm sorry, go ahead, Chris.
If I could just say something real quick before we, uh, um, just a quick story. I remember being a young kid and, um, there was a gentleman a little older than me that got into Paul at a real young age, and I always was pretty inspired by that. Um, and that was Mr. Bois. Um, and here we are, uh, with David Forth at nineteen years old, coming on to our committee. I mean, that's pretty exciting. I, I think, um, it's an opportunity there to, to use David uh, and, you know, networking, young, young voters, and, and, you know, I'm really excited about that. And also Hillary, or, has already demonstrated her, her, her knowledge, uh, you know, of, of, uh, education and, and like that. So I just think we're in a good spot, and I, and I appreciate both, um, you know, their efforts to, to run a campaign, and I congratulate them. Thank you.
I agree with you, I agree with you, Chris. The bad side of it is, when Bois and I get on this committee, I had hair and so did he. And I see that David's got a full head, so, you know, protect that, protect that head, though. I had to take.
We admire you, Dave.
Paying a motion to adjourn.
Chair Hayes.
Before, can we do that? Can we get a, a committee meeting date for next week? Can we confirm one?
If you like, we'll. Tomorrow, we'll send it out.
Okay.
I'm available on the fourth.
Let's find out how far off, um, Mr. Stanbrook is in, in, in the selectmen, and, uh, I'll get back to you. Okay, I have a motion in a second. Mr. Bois.
Yes.
Fires.
Yes.
Mr. Colley.
Yes.
Mr. Ford.
Yes.
Howard.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Sniffen.
Yes.
Mr. Scriven.
Yes.
Mr. Small.
Yes.
Mr. Hayes, yes. Thank you, everyone. Be safe. Good night, everybody.
Before we sign off, I just wanna mention graduation's still set for the thirty-first out on the baseball fields at six o'clock. More information to follow, but graduation still a go outside on the, on the thirty-first.
Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good night, folks.